Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Wilmington City Council. Before I do so, I do want to take a roll call. Mayor Protem, are you here?
Here.
Yes, President.
President.
President. Councilmember Grady?
Present.
Councilmember Anderson?
Present.
Councilmember Barnett?
Present.
Councilmember Spears? And, there's her. Okay, so everybody's here for... At this time, I'd like to call on Councilman Clifford Barnett to please do our invocation, and then ask if everyone will remain standing afterwards for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay. Our invocation comes from a leadership guy called the leadership of the best of people, by Mike Murdock. And he says, "These were indicated, those who admitted." And he offers this to Clifford: "Give instructions to a wise man, they will be yet wiser. Teach a just man, and he will indeed in learning." And he says that someone has said, "You don't learn anything when you talk. You're only learning when you listen." This is incorrect. Some of the greatest thoughts and ideas are suffered while I was teaching others. Goes on to say, "No one before this great knowledge will become..." "Give us knowledge, and we might be the best thing..." "...the best way to say..."
Clifford, I'm sorry with your microphone, thank you for standing. I don't know if you can hear me, but...
Couldn't hear me at all?
We could hear very little bit of you, but your microphone's...
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now perfectly. Thank you.
All right, let me pray. Eternal Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for the privilege to serve as leaders here in Wilmington. We ask you to give us direction and instruction. We ask you to guide our thoughts and our words and our actions, that all that we do will be pleasing in your hand. Many people will be watching us, and they'll watch us from here and all over the country. But most importantly, God, you always watch us. So be careful of what you hear, be careful of what you see, be careful of what you say, for the Father up above is looking down below. So be careful in what you say and do. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty, just for all.
Okay, all right. First item of business is our consent agenda items one through nine. Are there any items that any council member would like to hear separately? If not, what are the wishes of council?
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
Mr. Barnett?
We offer a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Mr. Barnett makes a motion. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Anderson. Okay, now we'll take individual roll call. Mayor Protem, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Rabinbar?
Aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
Mr. Spears? And then Chair's aye. That passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our public information segment, which we have several members, several people that have signed up to speak this evening. Each individual group will be allotted five minutes per person. First speaker this evening is Ms. Ellie Coleman, who would be speaking to us about budget increase proposal. Ms. Coleman? Okay, I'm sorry.
It was brought forth. Sorry.
Just wait for one second, just make sure that we have...
Sorry.
...all operational. Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So this is our public information segment. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes to speak. And so the first person that's going to be speaking to us is Ms. Coleman, who would be speaking to us about budget increase proposal. Ms. Coleman?
Thank you. Thank you for providing me with a platform to speak. On September 17th, 2019, ordinance one of the city council meeting was brought forth. A proposed reallocation of $18,800 from the North Carolina Drug Fund to the Wilmington Police Department to obtain training for night vision goggles. This requisition is outside their regular budgetary spending. Councilmembers asked the police chief, "When will the night vision goggles arrive?" The officer states that they were ordered last week and they will be here next week. The council joys in a chorus of laughter and approval, and the meeting proceeds. The date again, September 17th, 2019. Immediately, I was alarmed by this request, not by what it was for, but for the amount. $18,800 is the cost of a new Hyundai Sonata. $18,800 for training on goggles? I emailed Mr. Cheetham back in September about this allocation, because I had, and I still have, questions that I believe warrant transparency. Who is this trainer? Where are there other trainers that could provide the same service at a cheaper rate? Were they contacted? Has this gone out to bid, or why not? How many night vision goggles were purchased? From what vendor? For what was the cost? Why wasn't the cost of the training included in the purchase order for the night vision goggles? Did the budget unit manager consider the aspect of required training when the requisition was approved? Does the vendor supplier or the trainer have ties to anyone who is currently employed with the city or the Wilmington Police Department? My email was left unanswered, like so many others that I've written Mr. Cheetham over the last four years of my residency. So Mayor, when you say that you don't hear citizens' concerns about a budget or purchasing spending, maybe it's because the emails aren't being forwarded to you. I sincerely doubt they're being read at all. And I don't mean that as a quip, but something that generally makes me sad about my city's budget unit manager. However, before I digress, we can conclude two things. The Wilmington Police Department was equipped and trained with night vision goggles at the end of 2019. On April 15th, 2020, Stephanie Morgala and Paige Esquera were reported missing. Earlier, a 911 call had identified a crash and reported a car had driven off the road into the woods. Wilmington Police Department and other first responders arrived. A body camera recording that was released to show that the officer only searched for eight minutes before leaving the scene. Over 1,600 man-hours went into the search of a fate that often ends with too late. Not once were the night vision goggles used. I'm not here to be political as much as I am here to be prudent. Does $18,800 only buy you training on how to use night vision goggles, but not when? Or would that be additional $18,800? It brings a larger pattern of reckless financial complacency. Accountants' projects are over budget by large margins that continue to proceed despite the fact that the cost continues to outweigh the future gains. Where are we getting this money? At what cost? Why is it being spent this way? Why can the city easily allocate the cost of a reverse osmosis system for an elementary school into the hands of people who do not use the tools that we give them? The lowercase leaders in the WAPA have proposed implementing a citizens' review board with subpoena power. I want to take a step further and expand the citizens' review board to include the financial records of all city business dealings. I am, as I'm sure other taxpayers are, curious about how public funds are being spent, and by who and by what means are awarded the funds for allocation. I'm here to propose a ballot initiative in November, a public question. Should the city's financial records over the last 10 years be audited by a citizen-led independent review board of data analysts, accountants, and investigators? If the citizens vote yes, then the city has no choice but to implement an independent review board constructed by city residents who are committed to morality, justice, and virtue in the name of fiscal responsibility of taxpayer funds in the best interest of community by putting people before profits or personal gain. This one instance alone of the night vision goggles procurement and the subsequent behavior of the police warrants such a board. The city must restore transparency in order to gain trust. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Next speaker is Mr. Cedric Harrison and Ms. Jana Robertson, who will be speaking to us about the Black Lives Matter street mural.
Ooh, it's wet. Meredith, this is a flash drive for you. Hello.
Hello.
I am pretending I'm Grayson Davis, because I was on the list to speak instead of Grayson, who is our designer and artist. Do you see him right there? That's where he is. So pretend I'm him. People get us mixed up all the time, so I can understand that this will work just fine. Mayor Sappho, council members in Wilmington, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak about Black Lives Matter mural proposal. My name is Grayson Davis, and I have been a resident of Wilmington since 1998, where I have served in many roles. I have served as an Army veteran, radio personality, social worker, teacher, musician, artist, and a black citizen, which sometimes does seem like a job. I have been a conduit for unity of all races my entire life. But today, I'm coming to you as a black resident of Wilmington. I have heard the worries towards displaying a Black Lives Matter art installation, but I want to focus instead on the benefits and the opportunities. Black Lives Matter is not a proclamation of racial dominance. It's an expression of care to show the world that Wilmington recognizes and supports its residents of color. We want to show future generations that ILM is a positive place to grow, live, and thrive. There are always going to be trepidations and worries, but at some point, you have to be confident enough as a leader, all of you, to take a risk on the right side of history. When we look back at this moment in 10 years, do you want to be the council that turned its back on its black residents or stood with them? We have a history of 1898 massacre, burning of Shell Island, incarceration of the Wilmington 10, and recent racially charged statements from the police. So we have a lot of ugly history to overcome. But this art installation is an expression of care, okay? It symbolizes that everyone that drives by in Wilmington, that it's a place that cares about its black residents and stands by them during turbulent times. We have chosen this expression of care instead of a protest. And we were very happy when Mayor Sappho signed a North Carolina mayor's statement saying, "We also support the rights of those who are peacefully protesting and honoring the memory of George Floyd and countless others who have been victims of systemic racism and police violence." Now, I have to admit, I'm going to go off my script here to tell you there's a reason Grayson Davis was selected as the lead artist and designer. He's also was, had to suffer brutality from a former police officer who still to this day was not brought to justice. But rather than being bitter or angry, that's not what this is about. I don't know if you can see him, but do you see the big smile on his face mask? That's what he sells. He's all about happiness. I have one of his shirts. I think he has it on now. It says "Love." He's all about love. If you see any of his artwork, there's no way you can see it and not smile. And so this is not angry anything. This is unity and bringing love together. And that's really what our design for the art installation is. By saying yes to our art installation, you're saying we recognize the inequities that we no longer are willing to tolerate, and that we're no longer willing to tolerate prejudice or discriminatory practices of any kind. Those types of behaviors are no longer welcome in our city, and we want you to know that the second you enter our city. This is not really for my generation, Grayson's generation. This is for the children and the future generations. We want to help children of color to breathe easier in our city and not carry around feelings of inferiority or fear or that they're going to be targeted for discrimination. We want everyone to feel secure in Wilmington. He works as glow as a teacher, and his white students have been crying in fear for their black friends. And so we're not the only ones who believe Black Lives Matter. All races want black lives to matter, so we all can matter. Allowing our art installation could set a precedent, but it's the best type of precedent that the city could have. This would be an example to show all citizens that the city stands with us. We're not fighting with the city. We're actually standing with the city. And you're our representatives that we want to stand with us. We do have some bullet points here now. Here's the business. We have a pledge of full funding from Lighthouse Films, so no tax dollars will be needed. We will install and maintain the art for whatever allotted time. We had asked for three years, but we know you all would prefer shorter. We will uninstall the art installation at the time we agree to. And already Dreams of Wilmington has offered to take it, to display it, the minute we take it down. But again, we'll need city approval for that, because Dreams, you all have control over what goes to Dreams. We'll solicit diverse artists across town to participate, and we'll even host an unveiling where community children can put their handprints on the backside of the signs. Right now, if you look at the petition, I'm going to give you the link soon, it has 4,000 individuals who all wrote messages of support for this. So even though you've been getting lots of emails for and against, I'm letting you know 4,000 people have been in support. We also have several organizations: Support the Port, the Art Council of Wilmington, lowercase leaders, New Hanover, NAACP, Black Lives Matter Wilmington, Dreams. I have a long list of supporters, and you're going to get this in writing. Last couple of things I wanted to say is Gervais Memorial Park is a fitting location for this art installation. Thomas Gervais was the founder and publisher of the Wilmington Journal, which was run by his wife Willie upon his death. Mr. Gervais openly decried discrimination and sought the eradication of discriminatory practices wherever he found them without fear or favor. The Gervais were dogged in their pursuit of equality and justice, and we want to be the same. We request that the city put the matter to a vote, so we know if we can proceed with this proposal. We submitted our proposal over a month and a half ago, June 11, when hundreds of cities and towns were creating murals of all types to support their black residents. Even though we are slow to join the worldwide movement, we can still make this art installation a part of the improvements happening in Wilmington. If our proposal's not approved, we will collaborate with the city and persevere our quest for a better Wilmington through art. So as our representatives, we really hope you'll support us now and to create a joint messages for our citizens. All great artwork should be controversial, and it should bring about conversation. In this case, the conversation of how we can belay racist ideologies and show our people of color that the community cares is something we really hope you will consider at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Rebecca Trammell, who will be speaking to us about recommendations for law enforcement reform slash mental health. Ms. Trammell, welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So good to be with you guys tonight. I appreciate this opportunity, Mayor Sappho, councilmen and women. I'm grateful for my friends who are with me tonight in the other room, including my new friends Andrew and Elizabeth Losi of Pine Valley Anti-Racism Alliance. Tonight, we are here because the winds of change are blowing. We stand here tonight in the middle of a pandemic and protests. We have seen the county rename a park, make a proclamation that racism is a public health crisis, and statues that once cast their shadow of the Confederacy no longer stand in our public squares. Young people have organized to sit in in the park and challenged the community to rise up. Protesters of Occupied City Hall realized that this took the death of three people. It took, in short succession, the lives of Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, and George Floyd to awaken the conscience of our nation. But we will not go to sleep. We cannot go to sleep. Perhaps we are here for such a time as this, and perhaps right now is the time to make changes that should have been made a long time ago. And now, it is our opportunity, and we each have a role to play. Perhaps it is time, as John Lewis said, to get in some good trouble. I believe that we are all here because we believe that Wilmington can, should, and must prosper, and we're here to find ways for that to happen. I looked for the Webster dictionary. I looked to the Webster dictionary for the definition of prosperity, and it is a condition of being successful or thriving, especially as it relates to economic well-being. I would say that true prosperity cannot coexist with oppression. It cannot coexist with injustice. And we cannot prosper while others do not. In order for Wilmington to truly thrive, we must do three things. We must remove monuments and symbols of oppression. We must, secondly, dismantle policies and practices that perpetuate division. And discrimination leads to disparities, which drive division. And third, we must construct new structures of equity. I want to bring up a new initiative that started in Pine Valley from Pine Valley residents to rename the streets. Now, I want to say something about those streets. When I was younger, as I grew up in Wilmington, I would see the names of Confederate generals and the Confederate general Robert E. Lee and other notable characters and players in the Confederacy. And it told me something very clear. It said that I'm not wanted there. And honestly, when I was a kid, I really literally thought the Ku Klux Klan must have lived there. I thought perhaps everyone in, most likely everyone in this neighborhood believes the values of the Confederacy. And I would avoid that neighborhood at all costs. As a matter of fact, just a couple of weeks ago, someone asked me to make a drop of masks onto Robert E. Lee's street. And when I, at first, had offered to take the masks to her, but when I realized it was on Robert E. Lee's street, I had to think about that again. And I sent someone else to go, because I did not feel welcome to come into that neighborhood. It might as well be a walled community, and it was intended to be that way. That neighborhood was built in the 50s and 60s, and those names were intentionally chosen, because Muni had integrated, or it was, they weren't going to disallow people of color from being able to enjoy the golf course. And so they made this neighborhood happen in that moment, which is how a lot of times private schools started, and these kind of things happen. It might as well be walled. It might as well be walled off from the rest of us. I don't want a city like that. And I was so excited when I saw that these friends, these new friends, were taking it upon themselves to change the names, because they were doing that to let me and people who look like me know that we are welcome, that this city is accessible to all of us, and we do not believe in these values. I know that they are in the process of trying to get consensus, but I also know that this is something that is actually in your wheelhouse. This is something that you guys can make a decision to do. You could decide right now that the legacy of the Confederacy is going to be contextualized and no longer venerated in our city. And we're not going to make decisions, and we're not going to perpetuate structures that continue to make some few people feel alienated. We sing odes to oppression all the time in our city. The statue stood. We're in walking distance of the Cotton Exchange. And if only they just sold cotton, but they didn't. They also sold people. We have a festival, the Azalea Festival, in which I participated in as a child. We have garden parties, and we have young girls, 16-year-olds, dress up in antebellum-style dresses. It's before the war, before emancipation. Do we celebrate that year? It's not just the city's symbolism that has to change. It's the structures of inequity as well. Because I've heard it said a lot of times lately that, you know, these are just symbolic changes. Well, symbols were put there for a reason. Symbols need to be taken down for the same reason, in many cases. But we also need to address the policies and the procedures and the participation that we have in perpetuating a narrative in which some people are not equal, in order for us to truly be seen as equal and for us to become one and truly thrive and become prosperous as a community. We can't become prosperous if there's no peace, if there's no unity. Because I believe that we can do better.
Thank you.
I have one more thing to say.
Because you've gone over twice. I'm sorry, but we have other speakers that have signed up to speak. So I allowed you over two additional minutes.
You're going to give me two additional minutes? Is that what he said?
I already gave you two additional.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And I hope that tonight that you guys will make a decision to remove structures, including the street names that are in Pine Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Matthew Sapperman? How do I pronounce that properly? Sapperman? Who will be speaking to us about budget and police reform. Okay. Then our next speaker is Mr. Robert Emerson, who will be speaking to us about curfews and statues. Did not? Okay. Mr. Israel Sorensen will be speaking to us about budget approval for law enforcement.
Good evening, Mayor Sappho. Good evening, City Council. My name is Israel Sorensen. I am a resident of Wilmington and New Hanover of six years, and a resident of the southeastern region of North Carolina my entire life. And I am here to talk about money and finances with y'all, because honestly, I feel like that is the only way that y'all will listen. Now, I would like to point out the ordinance appropriating $165,000 from a 2016 Parks Bond Continuity Fund to be approved for golf course clubhouse improvements. That is an extra 15% contingency of an already $1,155,900 expenditure that was allocated for these improvements, that is also not including the almost $1 million in contract funding for golf course maintenance from a council agenda from a month ago. Now, see, my issue with this is because not everyone in town is a card-carrying club member of the Boervaage, or insert any other golf course that you have here in Wilmington. The fact that we are allocating this amount of money for golf course maintenance to possibly sue a tourist industry that only caters to one side of Wilmington residents and one side of vacation goers that try to visit our city in order to have a good time here. Why aren't these funds being allocated for the community? Why aren't these excess funds being given to support a possible market or a grocery store on the north side to help combat the food shortages and the food drought over there? Why aren't these funds being used for after-school funding for programs by the Dreams Academy, where myself am also a teacher? Where my students need pencils and notebooks and need these things? If you really want to support the community, then you have to back the community. And if you have to back the community, you have to back it with your wallets, because there's really no other way that you're going to support the community, because talking about it does not work. The next thing I want to talk about is possible entrepreneurship programs and tech funding in Wilmington. We see other cities, like in LA, where Nipsey Hussle, rest in peace, had tech funding and entrepreneurship programs funded in the inner city for his people, so that way they can get a leg up in a system that already does not view them as potential growth and progress. I would also like to talk about if there is a tourist problem here in Wilmington, which clearly there is by viewing downtown area with now closed businesses like River Rat, like Proof, like Calico Room, like The Whiskey. They have all been structured and put in place for other things that are not conducive for the tourist program here in Wilmington. So why not support local black-owned businesses that are going to... that are going to help you revitalize the tourist program here in Wilmington? Why not start backing businesses, period, that are local? Why not back Trucks Chicken and Fish on Rankin, Creators Print House on Princess, Food Wangs on Carolina Beach Road, Just Cut at Barber Shop on Castle, Distinguished Cuts on Princess, Murphy's Insurance, and the numerous other local black-owned businesses? Selling plates is a longtime hustle and staple. Do you not see the drive that your own citizens have in these communities? Visit NC 365, held a convention here in 2019 in Wilmington. I want to know, do you think that there are any local black-owned businesses at these conventions where they can find information to help support their businesses and help grow the economy and ecosystem and the microcosm of the black communities and the black businesses in the city? I would also like to talk about the police defunding. The fact that just last night, do you know the cost of sandbags? A sandbag is 50 cents. Do you know the cost of all the money that is going into these police trainings and they're still not utilizing these police trainings properly? I myself am a veteran, so I know exactly what these standards should be upheld. Instead of trying to preserve your underpar on the back green, you need to start backing your green behind your communities that are underpar. These are your people. This is your community. The past individuals that spoke are all outstanding members of this community that have been doing things for years for the betterment of this, this city in different ways, whether it be teachers, the arts, helping the community in the, in the public, in public services. These are your people. You need to listen to them. Defund the police, Black Lives Matter, Black Trans Lives Matter, Black-owned business matter, local black-owned business matter. I yield my time.
Okay, thank you to all the speakers that have come to for us and spoke this evening. Our next item of business is our public hearings. Item PH1 is an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city to rezone property containing 5.49 acres of land located at 4729, 4733, 4737, 4741, 4745, 4749, 4753, and 4757 College Acres Drive from R15 Residential to MF MCD multifamily conditional district to allow for a 78 multifamily residential units. I will also note that whoever makes the motion must read a consistent statement for the record. At this time, I'd like to recognize City Councilman Mr. Cheedon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Mr. Omahauny, Associate Planner, that planning department will overview this item.
Mr. Omahauny, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. Thank you. Tonight's site includes eight parcels containing approximately 5.49 acres and is located along College Acres Drive between South College Road and Racine Drive and was annexed effective January 31, 1999. The site is currently occupied by residential uses. This map provides context and highlights the site's location. This slide provides the existing conditions of the site, looking north towards the properties and then looking south across College Acres Drive and east and west along College Acres Drive. These images are of the adjacent land uses. The top images show single-family residential uses west and south of the site, while the bottom images show future development to the south and existing multifamily to the north. The site is located on the north side of College Acres Road, which is bordered by multifamily residential uses to the north, single-family residential uses to the east, west, and south. Southwest of the site is a recently approved CDMU project currently under development. Further to the west are commercial uses along South College Road, and UNCW is located even further to the south. The request is to rezone the site from R15 Residential to MF M multifamily medium density for a total of 78 units. The site plan proposes nine duplexes and five multifamily buildings with 12 units in each and an amenity center along College Acres Drive. Driveway connection from College Acres Drive and Racine Drive are proposed, and a pedestrian subconnection to the campus edge property to the north is provided. Shown on your screen are elevations provided by the applicant showing the style of duplexes along College Acres Drive and the proposed multifamily buildings on the bottom of the screen. The site is located in a greenfield site, a suburban commercial retrofit area of opportunity. The site is also located within an employment and academic center and near a regional retail center as identified on the Comprehensive Plan's growth strategies map. The Comprehensive Plan identifies low- to medium-density residential developments as appropriate transitions between lower-density neighborhoods and more intensive commercial residential and mixed-use areas. The Comprehensive Plan also calls for development within existing neighborhoods to be consistent with the design elements of nearby structures and to enhance the overall character of the area. This neighborhood is in transition, and the proposal serves as an appropriate transition between the non-residential uses located to the west of the request along South College Road and the existing single-family homes east of the request. The proposal is compatible with the project across College Acres Drive in the southwest and the multifamily development immediately to the north. Staff does believe that the parking should be limited to the maximum of 223 spaces to reduce the amount of impervious surface, provide more open, meaningful open space, and encourage tree preservation. Furthermore, the site is within the one-mile no-drive, no-parking permit area of UNCW, therefore restricting the use of cars to get to campus. A condition limiting the applicant to 223 spaces what is included in staff's original case summary presenting to Planning Commission. Planning Commission modified that condition, which is number eight, to say that parking in excess of the minimum required number of spaces, which is 207, shall be constructed of pervious materials with a maximum allowance of 258 spaces. The applicant has revised the plan since the Planning Commission hearing to show a total of 250 spaces. However, staff does still support its original recommendation for a maximum allowance of 223 spaces. Staff does believe that the amendment is generally consistent with many of the policies within the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the city's adopted focus areas, and staff believes the request is reasonable in the public interest and recommends conditional approval. Planning Commission did recommend unanimous approval with a modification to condition number eight as it previously stated. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, sir, Mr. Rambo.
I just wanted to be clear on the pervious parking spaces. Anything in excess of 207 is required to be pervious?
No, anything in excess of the maximum, which would be the 223, is required to be impervious. However, Planning Commission, their condition, their modification to number eight to state that anything required, or anything provided over the minimum of 258 be made of pervious surface. So they, they brought it down from the maximum to the minimum.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that. Thank you. Councilmember, just to be clear, if it's over 207, it has to be pervious? That's what's in the ordinance that you would be voting on tonight?
Correct. That is the condition that Planning Commission put on the, on the report.
Sir, Mr. Anderson. So, in, I've done adding and then I've been told otherwise. How many bedrooms?
There are a total of 252 bedrooms.
Okay. Um, so if they're college students and they all have a car, where do they park? If you got to, if you don't, if you do what y'all are wanting to do?
Right.
In the road, on the grass? I mean, I, I still can't follow this line of reasoning. And I know I've heard Glenn say, well, when Chapel Hill or in, you know, Charlotte, you walk in Chapel Hill. I mean, you can't even walk across College Road, you know, safely. So I, I, I don't know how we, I can see that if it's normal multifamily where like, you know, you can have some children, you know, they're going to need one for every bedroom, clearly. But if it's adjacent to a university and, and even, you know, I just don't, I see other developments we've done and I see where, where they're parking. And that part, I don't like, it's awful. You know, we, we try to stick to this not that parking, if the car's still here, it's got to park. So it finds a place to park, you know, and it's typically in the road, in the grass, in the trees, in the bushes. So I, that part, I don't know if we need to have some subspecies of MF M where it's college versus the other. But I, I can see the need, unfortunately. I mean, I'd rather keep some trees or have less parking spaces. But if you're going to have, if you're going to endorse 250 units, then, I mean, bedrooms, sorry, then they need a place to park. Otherwise, steer them away from 250 units.
Right.
And, so I mean,
That was something that...
Y'all buy 250 units, so they need the parking.
Right. And we weighed that, that consideration. And we felt that the proximity to UNCW and the opportunity to gain some open space, preserve some trees, outweighed the additional parking that the applicant was asking for.
But, but Mr. Rambo, going to Mr. Anderson's question, I know one of the, and one of the concerns or one of the issues that we've had in the College Acres area is that people have rented those homes out, and usually the three-bedroom homes, and usually three people occupy the home, and then their friends come over. And then that means there's six cars, sometimes there's nine cars. We've had a lot of complaints in that neighborhood over the years about people parking all over the front yards in the street. And to Mr. Anderson's point, you've allowed for 250 units to be approved, and 223, it was, is the, is the weight being given to stormwater and clean water? Is it a fact of trees?
It's a combination, I would say, providing more meaningful open space.
But when you say meaningful open space, can I give you an example of a meaningful?
Areas where you could preserve trees or green space or there, if I can go back to the site plan.
Could you please?
Yeah, sure. There were some opportunities we saw to provide more green space, which would then help stormwater runoff, things like that. So that's what we, we took into account when looking at this. We certainly understand their, their desire to have a space for every bedroom. However, when, when weighing that, we believed as staff, as we reviewed this, that it was appropriate to limit them to the maximum, maximum.
Could you beef up the, the landscaping to offset the increase in parking? And my concern is, to Neil's point, is you've got 250 units, 250 cars, then you've got friends, girlfriends, boyfriend, whatever. And then they start parking in the streets, and that's when we start getting the calls. That's my, that's, I mean, I'm all for preserving the tree and the more green space. But this is a situation where we know from our experience with College Acres and that location of the university that we got a lot of kids come there with their cars. And I just, I, I just, I have a concern about that. Yes, sir, Mr. Rambo?
I'm, I'm going back to my original question. I, I said, okay, but I don't think I was fully clear on it. Generally, or in, in past histories of deals like this, we've had developers that were kind of balking it at the, at the additional parking. And here we have somebody who is asking for 258, which would certainly go a lot further toward accommodating the number of bedrooms. The one developer that has come to town that's bought a lot of single-family homes, he's done it right. Because you can go down any of the roads that surround the college where they've gone in and bought single-family houses and just started renting them. And it's horrible. And then right next door to it is somebody that's been there and raised their kids there, and they're retired there, and they got a nice yard next to it is a not-so-nice. And then, exactly, no yard, I mean, trash, no trimming of the shrubs, nothing. And then this guy came to town six, seven years ago and started buying up single-family homes. And it bothered me at first because it went into my old neighborhood where I was grown, grew up. But he's done a real good job. He's, he's done landscaping and he's made parking in that front yard. And I know, I'm preaching to the choir, you've seen it. That's good. Because I see it now where they have ample parking, not to park on the road or in the, where the grassy areas. But when we approved varsity lane back in, gosh, the 90s, and we didn't, you know, at that point, our code didn't ask for as much parking. Well, it's just one great big huge parking lot. There's no yards or anything because cars are parked in there. And, and I can see how if these kids can't get parking permits, their cars are going to be there. They're not going to get out and drive them to the college and be there while they're in classes. So I would rather see, I don't like to hear myself say it, but I'd rather see an increase in the parking and, and trim the landscaping or the buffering. Because the buffering between this project and the college, I think, is kind of nondescript. I mean, it's not as important as, as in other places because up and down College Road where it abuts the property, there's not a great deal of buffering other than what's natural. So I think that's something that if they ask for 200, if they ask for 250, I'd figure out a way to make it happen.
All right, Mr. Mayor, got a question.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, this is a good question. You said 250 rooms. Is that 250 beds? Or is that 250 rooms with double beds in some rooms?
I would have to defer to the applicant on that. I've been, the calculations are bedrooms.
Because I thought, okay, I'd, I'd like to just get the answer to that, please. Because if that's the case, you're going to have 250 bedrooms. And if you put double occupancies in some of those bedrooms, that's going to even, making it even more difficult for the parking.
Well, that's a concern.
Thank you.
Because of the fact is if you have the 250 beds, and even if it's single, even if they're just one bed per bedroom, a lot of cases, they have friends come over. And let's be real, I mean, people come over.
Right, I understand that, sure.
That's where the issue comes in with the, with the issues that we've had in College Acres over a number of years, not just the last 10 years, 20 years going back, of the amount of people that come over and stay. That's, that's a concern. But I was going to ask Mr. Rambo one other thing in respect to staff's, with the pervious surface, pervious surface could be, I know the pervious concrete, pervious asphalt, what have you. Are there other things, mechanisms they can use? I mean, I've seen other things where they use tree bark and, you know, different things that, you know, you can put down to the ground that allows the rainwater to penetrate the surface.
Without speaking outside of my range of knowledge, I know there's a variety of different ways that there could be pervious pavement, whether that's through some type of grid system or the pavement itself that needs to be treated. There's a variety of different methods that they could use to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you know, rather than fight about something after the fact or sort of after the fact of the, the buildings themselves, you know, the development, not the parking piece, I would ask our, our department to push back on the number at the beginning. We're not going to endorse this. Take away a building. Instead of at the end, tell them they can't have enough, you know, well, you, people can't, they'll just have to park wherever, in the bushes, or, you know, I don't, you know, do you follow me?
I do, I do.
It's, it's one against the other. And it's just interesting that we end up arguing about something that could have been headed off at the start, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, I just want to say that I agree with Patrick. I think there's way too much parking. You know, developers may like parking, but we're creating the problem of creating so many parking spaces that it's going, we're losing landscaping, we're losing trees, we're going to lose the appeal of the city. And I think we ought to hold the line. I, I would go with the staff's recommendation. Because just as Clifford was referring to, I think it's a question of how many bedrooms are going to be in these, these units. And I think there's going to be a lot more than we're, than the official number, let's put it that way. And while there may have been parking problems when houses are converted into basically small dormitories, this is the defined parking lot, and I don't think it's gonna be as big an issue. However, so I think we should go with what the staff has recommended. And I think you can't just give in and turn the city into a giant parking lot.
I also point out, this is walking distance to campus. Concept of these cars would be there and moving in and out all day. It should not be what happens, and that's why you allow these to be built closer to campus, so people can get up in the morning and walk to class.
Mr. Mahoney, to Mr. Grady's point, I would imagine that that played a lot in the decision of staff is for the reduction because of the walking, walkability to campus. Is that?
The proximity played a part in it for sure, being able to wake up and bike or walk to class. All students may not need a car who live in this location.
Okay. All right. Sanders?
I agree with that. They can't even, they can't drive there if they wanted. I mean, they're not gonna give them space. But unfortunately, College Road is one of the least walkable streets we have. I mean, that's where our college ended up. I mean, unfortunately, you know, downtown would be walkable as it could be. But I mean, what, okay, they're not gonna, it's not easy for them to get downtown, or get to the beach, or get to a job. You know, that's when the car's gonna be used. And that's the beauty of this development. It's not gonna be in and out all the time. It's not gonna create a ton of traffic. Because when they're during the week, during the day, hopefully one day when we get back to school, that's not gonna be an issue. That's the beauty of the location. But many people work, many people, you know, you, they can't, you know, walk down college to a grocery store. I just don't see that. It's not realistic at this point. You know, if we had a crossover, which I know Charlie and others have pushed for, that would, that might change the dynamic some. But we don't. It's very dangerous to crawl. So I just, when we keep saying it's close to the college, they'll never use the cars. They gotta have them for other stuff, unfortunately. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, just I'd like to recognize the applicant. See, Ms. Wolf? Ms. Wolf can, I don't know if we can hear you back there.
Thank you very much. My name's Cindy Wolf, and I'm speaking on behalf of the eight different property owners that are part of this and my client, the developer. I appreciate some of the comments that have been made, and will certainly try to answer those things and explain a little of the basis behind this. As you're aware, from the past year, I suppose, there have been some other projects in this vicinity, and it's been obvious that Racine Drive has become sort of the transition, that barrier that is separating what is the busier College Road corridor with commercial development, and what is multifamily development. Now, the other multifamily developments that are in our proximity are multifamily medium density, and they have, in fact, 17 units an acre. However, our project is not maxed out at 17 units an acre because of the desire of staff and our agreement that College Acres Drive should remain more of a residential character as it goes through. Everything along College Acres Drive is just a duplex. Those duplexes take up obviously a whole lot more room. They're only two-story. Had we been able to put all three-story buildings in here, even at the same density, we would have had much more open space and those things. So there's trade-offs in the design and some of the initial conversations with staff in the beginning. So this project is just at 14.2 units an acre. There are 252 beds, very similar to the comments that were made by some of the council members. Although no apartment complex like this can mandate who rents it out, it's obvious that this being in the proximity of the college, it is generally going to be college housing. So compared to apartment complexes across town that have two- and three-bedroom units that some, quite often, don't have two and three people living in them, this is rented per bed, this type of a complex. So those 252 beds will have 252 people. I would, Pat mentioned that some minor changes were made to the site plan. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. All right, sorry about that. Some changes have been made to the plan since the planning commission meeting of it. And those specifics have been that we separated the parking lot, which was just one great big parking lot in the middle with a central median, and that was to save some trees. We also shifted buildings around. One was to take a three-story that was on the far-left side, replace it with two duplexes, and shift it to the rear. That kept it away from what is still single-family housing to our northwest corner. We were able to do that by putting the amenity center up at the front, which will have the same character as those buildings. We also shifted buildings around to concentrate on maintaining groupings of existing trees that are obviously easier to preserve in clusters. That being said, there is always grading and some other things that go on. As far as meaningful open space, obviously, we have the college for additional recreation, for additional open space. But we, and part of when we changed that parking lot around and expanded the medians in it, we did drop eight parking spaces. So now we're at 250. Seven of those are handicapped. So we're under the amount. Certainly, there are sometimes some foreign students, some international students. There are people that do not have cars on occasion. But we truly believe that having this amount of parking to facilitate the people that are here, even though they can walk to class, but their guests and anyone else, is an important factor of a successful project. It was us that offered up, and the planning commission took advantage of it, that all of the spaces above and beyond that minimum required would be of pervious materials. Parking lots over 25 spaces have to be paved according to the city's technical standards. But those porous pavements can be the blocks with grass in them. They can be the porous concrete. So there are a variety of different ways that that can be handled. Certainly, the landscaping on a project like this includes the interior shading, the street yards. There is a buffer against that northwestern property boundary and street trees. There's sidewalks along College Road. So we believe that this is a project with, it has a high level of management for a project of this size. Next slide, please. Just a repeat of Pat's elevations of these particular buildings. And next slide, please. As staff said and the planning commission recommended unanimously, this project is consistent with our comprehensive land use plan. Really, we have improved it so many times. One of the comments that came up when the Triplex project just down the street was approved is, why are things happening piecemeal? At the beginning of this process, we only had four of these eight lots, and it's all we could get. What can we do? But we persevered and slowly but surely got a comprehensive project that goes to Racine Drive, which makes a logical designation. We were able to put the pond where the low spot is and the pond outlet would be. And it provides a much more attractive corner at Racine and College Acres Drive than having other units or anything else there at this point. So we believe this is consistent, and we hope that you will agree with the planning commission that this plan and our offer to make all of the parking spaces above and beyond the minimum required porous is justification for making sure that we do have enough parking and don't cause hassles in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for, yes, Mr. Anderson?
Ms. Wolf, could you, I mean, clarify that, that piece, I guess it's, it goes to Clifford's question. I think you, you covered it. I just wanna, I thought you did. But so the lease on these units or each exterior door, do you lease it by the, I'm trying to, the unit?
By the room.
Exterior door or by the bedroom?
Well, these types of units, because they're catered to students primarily, are leased by the bed. Each bedroom has a bed and its own bathroom. Then shares of either three or four, because these are all three- and four-bedroom units. They share the kitchen and a living room space. But everything is, the beds are leased individually. So if there are 252 beds, there will be 252 tenants, not compared to other apartment complexes within our city, that they are leased by unit. And however many people you put in them, it's up to you and the number of bedrooms.
So the scenario that I experienced my sophomore year when both of my guys walked out and I was left with the lease, that doesn't happen in this scenario, right?
It's. That's correct. You don't, you're responsible for yours. And I hope, most of the time, I think people get together and try to lease them in a group. But that's not always the case.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the, sir, Mr. Grady?
I do, I do. I just want to follow up in clarity.
We're gonna go Mr. Barnett, and then we're gonna go Mr. Grady. Mr. Barnett?
Okay, thanks. So, okay, with the, with the units, okay, you said there are 200?
There are 78 units, whether it's one of the duplexes or the three-story, are units. But there are 252 beds and tenants.
Okay, and so Unit A, bed number 63, then in that room, it'll be my bed. But then you said there are two other, you said there were like two other people in the, in the, in the room?
There'd be three or four people.
And they're included in the 252?
I'm sorry?
They're included with the 252?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, okay, I'm good.
And, and they're not allowed to have other, you know, you can't put two people in a bedroom. That doesn't, that's against the lease. So it is one person per bed in three and four unit structures.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Grady?
So, but the parking restrictions, do they go by beds or they go by units?
Well, everyone that had, well, obviously, we don't have as many spaces as units now. It's a matter of then marketing, and often international students are attracted to these types of developments.
And are they more or less likely to have cars?
I guess international students could be less likely, but it's hard to say. They certainly could still have friends. So that's why when we created some of the additional parking standards for the four-bedroom units, that was a text amendment about eight years or so ago, we, because they were generally campus housing style or types of projects, that we raised the minimum required parking spaces. In four-bedroom units, the minimum required is one parking space per bed. The only reason that 207 is there on a project like this is because we couldn't get four-bedroom units in our three-story buildings. So the three-story buildings, if it's a three-bedroom unit, the maximum is only 2.5 as it is. It's only 2.25. And in a college housing type of project like this, that just isn't feasible.
Another question I want to ask you, this picture that's up on the screen right now, when you showed it, did you indicate that this, there's some change in this?
No, this is the changed plan. There were minor changes made since the planning commission. We've worked with staff, and those changes include that green median down the middle of the parking lot so that we can have some more interest, some more street trees, some more shade. And that would be above and beyond what was already required by the landscape.
Because I'm comparing that to what's in our packet and.
No, that should be in your packet, except that.
It doesn't indicate green space on ours. In ours, it just looks like an island, so it's, it's green space. All right, so we have, this is a proposed site plan received the July 7th of 20. That, what you're seeing here on the screen?
Yes, and it is a plan that has evolved.
Okay, and this is the plan that is referred to in the ordinance, or the resolution here?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can we just make sure how many parking spaces we're voting on?
The plan has 250. And of those, everything over the 207 would be manned or is conditioned to be porous pavement.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the ordinance that you would be voting on, unless you choose to amend it, says that parking in excess of 207 spaces will be pervious with a maximum allowance of 258 spaces.
But this is the plan. We're, we're fine with the 250 because we couldn't fit anymore with these changes we made with the median and the building adjustments.
So whoever makes the motion can change it to the 250, rather than the 258. We could accept that.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. This time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing and ask if anyone in the public wishes to speak on item PH1. We have no one that is, that's coming to speak. Madam Clark, have we received any comments? Okay, we don't have any comments. I ask, are there any further questions from council?
I do, I want to ask Ms. Wolf, what was the feedback from the community?
Ms. Wolf, we have a question here from Mr. Spears.
Was there any feedback from the community about this project?
Sorry. We had a lot of coordination with the neighbors along this stretch back during the project that is across the street from here. We've continued to, and obviously, eight of these people that are on this stretch are part of this project. So just the couple on the other side are sort of biding their time, assuming that things will also change on that side. But no, I mean, we have not had any opposition to this expansion of what's been going on in that transition area.
Have you gone out any further, maybe outside of those eight people who seem to be in agreement with you?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Have you gone out any further in the community? And I guess that would be kind of.
Oh, well, the notification is 500 feet, and that has been made a couple different times, simply because the plan continued to change. So we've made that notification, and the city has continued to expand their notification. And so it has covered everyone, including people on the opposite side of Racine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So hearing no other questions, I am gonna close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Anderson. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Barnett is seconding it. Mr. Anderson, will you please read the consistency statement for the record?
Can I ask a question? Neil, are you proposing it as it is in our package, or with the 250 bases in paragraph eight?
Mr. Grady, I was going to refer to the site plan and the 250 spaces.
That answers the question. So, but we ought to make that clear on the record, that it's altered to 250.
I move to approve the proposed amendment to rezone property located at 4729, 4733, 4737, 4741, 4745, 4749, 4753, and 4757, College Acres Drive from R15 Residential District to MF MCD. That CD being the site plan presented tonight at this public hearing that shows us 250 max parking spaces. Multifamily medium-density residential conditional district for nine duplexes and five multifamily buildings with a total of 78 units. Find it to be consistent with the relevant policies in the comprehensive plan based on the application materials and information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report. And to find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The proposal provides an appropriate transition between the non-residential uses located along South College Road and existing multifamily to the north and the existing single-family neighborhoods to the east. The proposal is compatible with the developed pattern that has been established along College Acres Drive.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Anderson, who has read the consistency statement. We have a second to that by Mr. Barnett. So we're ready to vote? Okay, I'm gonna go down the line. Mayor Protem, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Avanbar?
Aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
And then the mayor's aye. So we have, um, that's unanimous, uh, of approval, and then we'll waive the second reading for next week. I mean, sorry, the, the second reading will be heard on August the fourth. Brings us to our next item visit, which are, which are ordinances. Um, item oh one is an ordinance making supplemental appropriation the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars to the special purpose fund for the Blue Cross and Blue Shield Foundation slash North Carolina Recreation and Park Association Diversity Equity and Inclusion, uh, mini grant to be used to provide the NRPA Wildlife Explorers Program for underserved urban youth participating in the city of Wilmington's after-school program. With that, I'll recognize our city manager, Ms. Chitum. Ms. Chitum?
Ms. Mayor, Ms. Amy Beatty, Community Services Director, will present this item.
Ms. Beatty?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. This is an ordinance appropriating funds from the Blue Cross and Blue Shield of North Carolina Foundation for the North Carolina Recreation and Park Association Diversity Equity and Inclusion Mini Grant in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars to further racial equity efforts by providing a six-week Wildlife Explorers Program for youth that participate in the city's community centers. The purpose of the program is to foster environmental engagement for these kids, uh, to have positive experiences in nature and foster, um, a greater comfort in, um, in nature. Staff projects around fifty youth will participate in the program. Students from the University of North Carolina Wilmington will conduct pre and post evaluations of the participants to gauge the effectiveness of the program. Uh, the city was qualified to apply for these grants because recreation staff have, um, uh, attended racial equity cohorts, uh, offered by the North Carolina Recreation and Parks Association, um, beginning over a year ago. And the city was one of four, uh, local governments, um, selected to receive the award. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any question from Ms. Beatty?
The fifteen hundred covers it, or is that kind of an addendum to something the city does, or is there a blending of funds in person or not?
Well, the, um, program will be conducted by City of Wilmington staff, so we're, um, contributing in kind by contributing staff time. The fifteen hundred dollars will cover all of the supplies for the program, including, um, backpacks for, um, the groups and, uh, supplies that they would need, um, and as well as covering, um, costs for snacks and so forth.
I guess all I'm getting at is that we, we, we're, the city's very involved in, in, in the youth, in youth programs, and it sounds like it's just fifteen hundred dollars and that handles it, but we, our employees are, are, are working it and we're, we're contributing in kind or in labor.
We're contributing in kind and labor, and we'll do all the marketing, um, promotional efforts to try and get as many kids as are interested and possible, as possible to participate in the program. And UNCW students are also contributing in kind by volunteering their time to perform the evaluation of the program.
Just as these things come up in the current environment where we're kind of getting to, I'm not sure a lot of people are, are, um, up to speed on exactly what all we do as a city in this regard to, hopefully try to, to spell that out in situations like this.
Yeah, I believe, um, city staff actually provided city council with some updated, um, program numbers for, um, our, um, youth, um, programs at the community centers as well as our senior programs at the community centers and the number of, um, participants that that serves. So, um, council has that information available to share with your constituents.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Beatty.
Thank you.
What are the wishes of council in respect to the ordinance item oh one?
I would move the ordinance.
Second?
Made a motion.
I'll second that.
By Ms. Haynes? Okay, um, Ms. Haynes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Avanbar?
Aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
And then, uh, here, so we have approval on the first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading?
It's moved.
Moved by Mr. Anderson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barnett?
Second. Yes. Yes, it is.
Mayor Protem, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Avanbar?
Aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
And Ms. Spears?
Aye.
Okay, and then chairs here. So that passes unanimously, as well as second reading. That brings us to item oh two A, which is Resolution Authorizing Acceptance of the Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant for the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cent. And I believe we have an accompanying, uh, ordinance of oh two B, which is ordinance making the supplemental appropriation, amount of twenty thousand three hundred to the special purpose fund, Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant Award by North Carolina Department of Environment and Quality Division of Environmental Assistance and Customer Service. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Chitum, Ms. Chitum.
Ms. Mayor, thanks for reading both items because they're opinion in nature. Mr. David Ingram, our sustainability manager, will present this, this request.
Mr. Ingram, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So before you, uh, this evening is the resolution and companion ordinance accepting the, uh, twenty twenty Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant. Um, we've received this grant, uh, for a number of years, and it's always been, uh, a very helpful, uh, grant in regard to helping us improve our recycling program. This year's focus will be on, uh, uh, education and outreach with a specific focus on helping us, uh, reduce single-use plastics as well as, uh, targeting how to recycle right. Uh, a big component of that will be utilizing, uh, DQ, um, uh, materials, which, uh, they, they've got, uh, their recycle right campaign that they're using throughout the state to really focus on trying to use common icons, common language, uh, common visuals, uh, not only for us to use here in Wilmington, but across the state. So, um, we're a big supporter of trying to use that common language to, uh, avoid any confusion, uh, for our citizens. Um, again, some of the, the outreach materials will be, uh, a focus. Um, we'll be utilizing our communications department to help us push these materials out through social media. There will also be some, a live presentation at, uh, um, businesses and, uh, perhaps grocery stores in regard to targeting reduction of single-use plastic bags, um, as well as, uh, helping us reduce our contamination a, at the MRF, um, our material recovery facility with, uh, just north of town. Uh, as some of you are well aware, we got quite a bit of contamination that goes on, um, just through improper recycling, which ends up having to be sorted out at our material recovery facility. But we really hope this grant will, uh, allow us to take steps to reduce that contamination as well as educate, uh, and provide outreach to the public. Be happy to answer any.
Ms. Ingram, did Mr. Charlie, do you have a question?
I, I just.
Yes. I just wanted.
Hold on, Mr. Barnett, I'm going to let Mr. Avanbar go first and then if you go to you. Go ahead, Ms. Avanbar.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Clifford. Clifford?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I just want to say that I'm excited about the grant, and one of the things that I, I noticed in New York, they don't even use plastic bags anymore. And, um, I know Councilmember Charlie has been always talking to us about going to see the recycling site, and I've set up a schedule to do that, but because the COVID has not allowed us to do that. But I really would like you to also, um, make sure that we get that information into the hands of faith-based groups, because I'd like to see more people get involved in knowing how to recycle correctly. I'm done.
Mr. Avanbar?
Ju- just, uh, just an observation, uh, and I, I know people are tired of hearing me say, I preach it everywhere I go, but if, it would be, it would make your people out there that work hard, and those are, those are trying, trying conditions, and now with having to wear even more, uh, I was out there without a mask on before COVID hit, and, uh, it, it's breathtaking, and I can only imagine how much more difficult it is now. But if people would just not put, if they would just subtract plastic bags out of the, out of the, or any kind of plastic wrap, that would go so long i- in the, I think it is. And I, 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 today, when everybody puts the right stuff in the blue, in the blue containers.
Yeah, certainly, uh, uh, plastic bag and film recycling will be a, a, a big component of, uh, our outreach efforts.
Mr. Ingram, real quick, I, I know this, uh, I, I believe years ago, the, the legislature had, um, banned plastic bags. I think certain parts of the state I know got more banned, but I, I understood at one time that they, they banned plastic bags, especially along the coast because of the concern, plastic bags getting into the ocean and, and of course sea life getting it and, and killing them. But, uh, so that law was then rescinded and plastic bags now are, are allowed again. Of course, I know that most stores, big box stores, Harris Theater, whatnot, offer, I think Whole Foods is the brown bag, but some of these other stores offer either plastic or, um, paper. Um, and I, I don't know if we should, and, and, you know, legislative liaison with Tony McEwen and, and maybe ask for that in the maybe incoming legislative session. This doesn't always hurt to ask, but that we do have concerns, not only for our recycling, but also what it does to the, to the environment and what we're trying to do down here. Um, but I, I know Dave, Dave Mays, um, sitting over here, but that may be something, uh, Tom, with the, um, with the task force that we maybe look at too, because that, that, that would take a, a big push at the state level to see if they would, if they would do that. And I don't know how much pushback we would get from the, from the, uh, retail association that sometimes, uh, uh, fights us on those kinds of things, but I think it'd, it'd be well worth us reviewing that or taking a look at it again.
Be happy to. Yeah, that's, uh, you're, you're, you're not alone in that, uh, effort to curb single-use plastics. Um, and if we are, uh, using them, uh, if currently, um, our, our current goal is, uh, at least to make sure that they get recycled in the right way, uh, which is not in our curbside bins, but at your, uh, local retail establishments will often accept those types of materials.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Ingram. What are the wishes of council in respect to the resolution, which is oh two A?
Best move for resolution.
Mr. Avanbar has made a motion, second by Mr. Spears. How do you vote? Uh, Ms. Haynes?
Aye.
Mr. Avanbar?
Aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
Spears? And then here's aye. So that motion approves. Then we go to the item oh two B, which is the appropriation, uh, for twenty thousand dollars of the special purpose fund for the Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant Award by the North Carolina Department of Environment Quality and Division of Environmental Assistance and Customer Service. We have a motion?
It's moved.
Motion, Grady?
Second.
By Mr. Barnett. Okay. Mayor Protem, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Avanbar?
Aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
Spears? Chairs, aye. Do we have a motion to waive second reading?
Second.
And we have, uh, Ms. Haynes has made the, the motion, second by Mr. Avanbar. Okay, how do you vote, Ms. Haynes?
Aye.
Mr. Avanbar?
Aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Barnett?
Aye.
Spears? And then chairs, aye. So that passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item visit, which is item oh three A, which is Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to enter into negotiations with ATD Building Corporation of Wilmington, North Carolina to bring the contract price for the municipal golf course clubhouse improvements within funds available for construction and upon successful negotiation authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract. And then oh three B, which is the accompanying item, which is an ordinance appropriating one hundred and sixty-five thousand from the twenty sixteen Parks Bond contingency funds to the municipal golf course clubhouse improvements. At this time, I'd like to recognize City Manager, Ms. Chitum, Ms. Chitum?
Ms. Mayor, Ms. Beatty will also present this item.
Good evening again. Um, as the mayor said, um, this is a resolution, uh, authorizing the city manager to enter into negotiations with ATD Building Corporation of Wilmington, North Carolina to reduce the costs of the municipal golf course clubhouse renovation projects and upon successful negotiations enter into a contract with ATD, uh, and also requesting, uh, an appropriation of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in Parks Bond contingency funds, uh, to be moved into the project. The original scope, um, of this twenty sixteen Parks Bond project was to renovate the clubhouse, including a mechanical, uh, electrical plumbing roughen of a grill slash kitchen in the clubhouse, um, other clubhouse improvements and, um, the building of a cart barn. The bids were open on September twenty-sixth of twenty nineteen, and the low bid was two million dollars, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, uh, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. Uh, the available project funds are one million ninety-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. So staff, uh, met with its consultant to discuss, uh, reduction of scope in the, in the project, and, uh, the results of those meetings, uh, were to delete the building of a cart barn and to delete the roughen of a, um, grill in the clubhouse. All other renovations to the clubhouse would move forward. The new bid was open May nineteenth, twenty twenty. The low bid from ADT is in the amount of one million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars, uh, leaving a short fund, uh, in the, um, project of, uh, sixty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Um, staff believes, uh, along with its consultant, that it can, uh, value engineer to get the project cost down within available budget. Um, so therefore staff would like to, um, uh, enter in it into negotiations with ATD, and we, in the accompanying ordinance, are also requesting to move a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of Parks Bond contingency money into the project to, uh, cover anticipated, any anticipated change orders. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Amy, what, what was the contingency, uh, number for that project for the golf course? Ten percent, fifteen percent?
Moving the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars into it would give us about fifteen percent contingency. Um, right now we have zero contingency. We're sixty-two thousand dollars over the available project budget. So the intention is to negotiate with the contractor to get the, um, project within the available budget, but then appropriate in a fifteen percent contingency. Um, in the Parks Bond, um, uh, there is a contingency line of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which has not been touched yet. So we're requesting to move a hundred and sixty-five thousand from that three hundred and seventy-five to serve as a fifteen percent contingency.
So you feel pretty confident you can come within that number? I, I know you're eliminating some of the project design. I think the cart barn was one of the things that we talked, you, you just mentioned. What, what was it? Was there in that, uh, something else?
The, um, roughen of the grill.
So we're not going to.
That could be done at a future date. We still are installing a, um, what you would call a. We still are installing a, what you would call a catering kitchen or a holding kitchen, along with bar seating area that will support the, the sale from the vending machines and so forth that we have out there now that, that will be upgraded. If funds become available in the future, it would be easy to go back in and do that rough-in. But staff is, is, is confident in, in those numbers. We wouldn't want to move any additional contingency in there at this time, knowing that there are other projects from the 2016 bond remaining. If there are funds available left over from this project, we'll be able to move those to other projects.
Question?
And I'm sorry, Kevin, I'm sorry.
Yep, thank you. Saw my hand up there. Amy, we got a little criticism earlier this evening about funding this project. I wanted to go over a couple of those things. First of all, this is a capital project in this case. This is not operations. So when it's built, it becomes an asset. It still will belong to the city ultimately.
Correct.
Okay. And in this Parks Bond, we've done a couple of other substantial projects. Couple of gymnasiums, haven't we already?
That's correct. And the, I want to be clear, because I, I wasn't sure what I heard from the speaker earlier, but I thought that I heard him say that there had recently been additional funds moved into this project. The original allocation from the Parks Bond to this project was $1 million. About a year and a half ago, we moved monies from a, an older Parks Capital Project that wasn't going to move forward. $200,000 went into the municipal golf clubhouse renovation projects. So that the final budget for that was $1.2 million. $200,000 was moved into North Waterfront Park, and over a million was moved into the Davis Center Gym.
Right. So the Davis Center Gym is, is over a million dollars we're spending on that.
The final project budget for that was around 2.4 million. And that contract was awarded by council in May, I want to say. The groundbreaking has taken place and construction for that gym is underway.
So we got those gyms, and we did some other work on the other gymnasium, the one nearby here.
Yes, we were able to self-perform some of the work to the existing gym, including rehabbing the floor, new paint, and new lighting.
And that was done fairly early in the Parks Bond project, if I remember correctly?
It was one of the first things that, that was done. And so what's?
Yeah, I just want to put this in context, that yes, this is an improvement to a great asset the city owns, which is the golf course. But we haven't forgotten the other needs of the city in the Parks Bond. We, we've already attended to a number of them. The other thing I want to point out is that, from an operations standpoint, the, the green fees pay for the operation of the golf course, correct?
That's correct.
In fact, I think they increased their fund balance in this past year, if I'm remembering it correctly.
That's also correct.
So we're not subsidizing the, the green fees of anybody. They're, they have to pay the cost of, of playing this course.
That's correct. The municipal golf course is an enterprise fund. And so what that means for the public is that all expenses must be covered by revenue. And while the golf course does rely on some services from the general fund, they are charged back to the golf course. So it is completely self-sufficient and not reliant on the general fund or taxpayer.
And the hope is, in making capital improvements, as are proposed in this ordinance, is that the golf course can run even better and become even more valuable for the city and for those who play there.
That's true. One of the aspects of the clubhouse renovation is to have a multipurpose room that's adjacent to that kitchen I was speaking of earlier. And the intention is to rent that out to any group whom would want to have a, a function there. So we're adding a new revenue stream to the golf course.
And didn't we, a couple of years ago, add a program out there for youth golf?
Yes, the First T of Kate Fear operates at a facility adjacent to the golf course.
It's actually on the golf course grounds, right?
That's right. It's, it's city-owned land. And we allow First T to operate on that facility. We also lease out an old fire station that's on the property so that they can have a space for indoor programming as well during inclement weather. For folks who may not be aware, First T is a youth golf program that promotes its programming to disadvantage kids. While they learn golf and golf is promoted, it's really just a vehicle to teach them life skills. There, I believe last year, over 500 youth were served through that program.
Thank you, Amy. I just wanted to make sure that the whole picture was painted tonight, not just one side.
Could I follow up on that just for a second?
Yes, Ms. Haynes.
Um, Amy, I, I thank you for your hard work. Just to follow up on what Kevin said, I hope since we have a new public information officer, there seems to be a, a lack of information or knowledge in the general public about what types of programs we do promote, especially for underserved youth. So I hope that you'll work with the new PIO and, and try to get some of that information out in, in a format that, you know, is easily attained by a lot of people. You know, I think we do a lot of good things, but I don't think we ever let people know really what, what we're doing. So I, I, I just hope you can work with him and, and try to disseminate some of that information.
Yes, ma'am.
So Anderson?
Kevin did a, a great job of covering it, but maybe I missed it. But the very first part of that is, this council did not vote for any of that. It was voted for at a referendum by the public. And we put out exactly what we were going to spend our money on. This was not something that we, we did in this room or we voted on. The citizens of Wilmington voted on it. So, and then I think Kevin picked up from there pretty well. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Amy, this is not on the same subject, but just real quick, the, the gym at MLK Center, when is that due to put out for bid, or has it already been put out?
We're in discussions with our engineering department about the timing of that gym. What we committed to the public is that all of the 2016 Parks Bond projects would be completed within five to seven years. And we, much like the transportation bond, we divvied up the projects into three tiers. Just, we, we have to do that for a couple of reasons. Number one, capacity of available project managers. And two, because of the way the debt is structured. And so we felt that it was important to get the Davis Center Gym underway first, given that there is no gym at the Davis Center. And then follow with the MLK gym, since they already had a gym. I'm hoping that design will, will begin for that by the end of the calendar year.
Then design, when, 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 when does it come to us for appropriation?
If it's all right with city council, I'd like to consult with engineering and, and get back to you on that after, you know.
I just had some people inquire about it, and I just wanted to.
I understand.
And I know that's one of the larger projects left out of the Parks Bond, so.
Correct.
That and the cross-city trail going down Greenwood Road, which I know is probably be the last project ever done, but anyway, I would hope not, but anyway. Got it. Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. All right. What are the wishes of council in respect to the resolution, which is item O three A?
Move the resolution, second.
Rabinborg has, Mr. Rabinborg has made the motion. Mr. Anderson has seconded that motion. Okay. Mayor Pro Tim, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Rabinborg, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. O'Grady?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
Spears?
Nay.
And then mayor's here. Okay, so that passes six to one. Okay. Then on item O three B, which is ordinance appropriating $165,000 from the 2016 Parks Bond contingency funds to the municipal golf course clubhouse improvements. Do we have a motion to for that particular item, item O three B?
So move.
Haynes has made the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Okay. All right, Mayor Pro Tim, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Rabinborg, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. O'Grady, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Spears, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, and the mayor's aye. Do we have a motion to waive second reading?
So move.
Second.
Barnett, second by Mr. O'Grady. Okay. How do you vote, Mayor Pro Tim?
Aye.
Mr. Rabinborg?
Aye.
Mr. O'Grady?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
Spears? Okay, and the mayor's, so we've passed unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item O four A, which is a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and better known as NFWF, grant agreement in the amount of $1,410,345 to support the Clear Run Branch Drainage Improvement and Stream Restoration Project, which is accompanied by an ordinance, which is item O four B, which is an ordinance appropriating $1,410,345 from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Grant Award to support construction and grant administration costs for Clear Run Branch Drainage Improvements and Stream Restoration Project. And then item O four C, which is a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute contract from the Engineering Consulting Services in the amount of $51,441 for National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Associated Grant and Construction Administration and Post-Construction Monitoring Costs for the Clear Run Branch Drainage Improvements and Stream Restoration Project Phase One. At this time, I'd like to recognize the city manager, Mr. Cheatham. Mr. Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Fred Royal, I saw the manager decided to approach you tonight, has a presentation for you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, council. So there are three items tonight. This is a, I would consider this a good, very good news item with a federal foundation in support of Clear Run Branch Phase One Capital Improvement Project. When we saw this grant application possibility, it was developed by the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation in Washington. And they were providing funding for municipalities around the United States for natural disasters like the wildfires in California, earthquakes, of course, hurricanes. So we looked into it a little bit more and spent some time, and we decided to apply for the grant with your approval, I believe it was last October. So we were delighted to hear that we were, we were awarded the grant. It was provided to us for consideration. So tonight, there's a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute the grant agreement in the amount of $1,410,345. The, the second document is the ordinance appropriating those funds for construction only, of the portion of the project in Phase One, that is the stream restoration portion. In other words, it won't pay for any portion of the gray infrastructure like the box culverts and have, have you. And the third item tonight for consideration is a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for Moffett Nickel to perform the grant administration and construction administration, which that fee of $51,441 is fully reimbursable by this grant. So again, that, that helps us out with our Phase One budget. So with that, I'll, I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? Okay. I don't see any questions here. So I will go to the item O four A, which is the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Grant Agreement in the amount of $1,410,345 to support the Clear Run Branch Drainage Improvement and Stream Restoration Project. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. O'Grady?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rabinborg. Okay. Mayor Pro Tim, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Rabinborg, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. O'Grady?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
And then the mayor's aye. So that's approved first reading there. That brings us to item O four B, which is the ordinance appropriating the $1,410,345 to the, for the administrative costs of the Clear Run Branch. How do, how do, who wants to make the motion there?
I do.
And Mr. Barnett?
I'll say it.
By the Mayor Pro Tim. Okay. How do you vote, Mayor Pro Tim?
Aye.
Mr. Rabinborg?
Aye.
Mr. O'Grady?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
And then Chair's aye. Okay, do we have a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Spears?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Grady. Okay. How do you vote, Mayor Pro Tim?
Aye.
Mr. Rabinborg?
Aye.
Mr. O'Grady?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
Spears? And then Chair's aye. So that passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. And that brings us to item O four C, which is the resolution to authorize the city manager to execute the contract for Engineering Consulting Services in the amount of $51,441 for National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Associated Grant and Construction Administration and Post-Construction Monitoring Costs for the Clear Run Branch Drainage Improvements and Stream Restoration Project Phase One. We have a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Anderson, second by Mr. O'Grady?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Rabinborg?
Aye.
Mr. O'Grady?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
Spears? Okay, and the Chair's, that passes, and that's been approved. Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to our next item of business, which is our resolution. Resolution considering the authorization for public art installation in support of Black Lives Matter, creation of a designated public forum for artistic and cultural expression. At this time, I'd like to recognize the city manager, Mr. Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Tim, I'm the deputy manager with overview.
Good evening, mayor and council. This item is in response to a proposal received by city council from Jenna Robertson, Cedric Harrison, and Grayson Davis on June 11th. In their written communication, there was a proposal requesting that council consider approving a mural to be placed on a prominent street downtown, either in the proximity of City Hall or the county courthouse. Subsequent to that request, staff communicated to, on behalf of the city, to Mrs. Robertson regarding concerns with creating, using a street that is used for travel and vehicular traffic as a form of public expression, as well as the concerns that are associated with persons benignly, benignly trying to take pictures of artwork in the roadway and putting themselves at risk. And so in response to those concerns, while Ms. Robertson and her team were, say, disappointed, they proceeded to look at other options. And to help facilitate that meeting, council member Spears and I, along with Dylan Lee and our new public information officer, met on site. And we looked for, it seemed to me, at least, that some of the factors or attributes that were important to this group in terms of creating a, a gesture of public expression that conveyed that not only to our residents, but the governing body supported equality and ending racism or oppression, if you will, that it be in a proximity to where the original request. equality and ending racism or oppression, if you will, that it be in a proximity to where the original request was, which was downtown. And that the, wherever this location be also, that be accessible to the public. And in looking at options in downtown, the riverfront was considered, and it was real quickly, from a staff perspective, viewed as not a viable alternative. We also thought that some of the public plaza spaces in front of City Hall or in front of the municipal services building at three oh five did not appear to be real suitable locations for an area of public expression. So we kept venturing out until eventually we tried to find roadway or roadway segments that were largely underutilized or closed to through traffic. And as we began looking at that, we looked at where are other amenities that could be coupled to create a sort of a destination, if you will, a sort of a place making, and that led staff to the area of the eighteen ninety-eight monument, the Freedom Walk Trail, Gervais Memorial Park, and identification of a couple of alternatives. So a meeting on site on the, and if you'll show the image from Jana. We didn't get this up during her comments today, but this information was prepared by them, and it reflects what the request is. On July tenth, following that meeting, subsequent to the following week, they modified the request, and they had it prepared at that meeting to show what they really wanted to do was do cutouts of letters decorated by art. And what Ms. Robertson prepared was a scale model. You're looking at the Gervais Memorial Park, the letters are behind the aluminum fencing. And then to give you a better idea of what it looks like, they're below the image itself, and it simply is letters with mosaic artwork painted on it. So that's what their request was modified to. Tom, can we zoom in? I apologize. I do have hard copies too, by the way. But it won't help those that are.
This is very good, Tom.
Okay, great. So that, that's to sort of give you the idea of the scale and, and that, that area that you're looking at, you're traveling east on Third Street at that point in time, and you're traveling east, looking somewhat southeasterly direction towards the Gervais Memorial Garden. So that gives you an idea, those letters, she placed them at the maximum height above the ground, and what she said, Tom, is I can't place them too high or too low because they're going to compete with the fence. And so as an artist, she saw placing them to scale at that level, eight feet tall, and that gives you an idea, a visual reference of where they are. And then staff has a little bit more information that will give you a reference of how it looks from our perspective, driving, and that would be an eastbound, westbound image. Again, this area, the land that this is on, is also owned by the city. We thought there may be some issues with outdoor advertising with the Department of Transportation. They've since said they view this really as expressions of public speech, so it's not an issue. So we can transition to one of the folders with eastbound traffic. That'll be the one that's closest. And I'll just continue for a moment. So this group modified the request, and we're bringing it forward as requested. And in addition, staff in your agenda item identified two alternatives. Should you decide at some point in time, we don't want to do this. And so staff said, well, let's try to at least bring you a couple of options that could be study further that will create a designated public forum for expression. And those were the end segment of Cowan and also North Front Street. So this would be traveling east in the far, far back of the picture, you can see several persons there, and just keep advancing through the slides, please, Greg. We're getting a little closer, traveling a little bit more easterly. I'm out there, there are four workers out there, and stop right there. That is a four foot wide by eight foot tall plywood sheet mounted four feet high, and we're holding it at that location. And then we'll continue driving east past the site. Can you, can you zoom, Greg, at all? Or enlarge a little bit? Okay. All right, thank you. Would you like to see a couple of images from the westbound direction? Or is that sufficient to give you sort of a? We do have those. So if you look at a couple of westbound, Greg, please. Okay, westbound, you have the Jersey Bay area median in the center. We're starting from the sort of the west, east, driving west, and so you're looking now south again, you can see the plywood. At that point in time, you may be getting, you probably reached the thirty-five mile an hour zone, but it's still pretty challenging to see it well. Again, those are the images taken by staff. So today, what we have before you, I have one more image. I think there may be one more, Greg. Okay. If we just put that one on reserve, I'll, I'll talk about it in a minute. So during council's review of this agenda item on Monday, what staff heard was, and conveyed to the requesters was scale, the number of letters, and also the size and proportion. And, and to some degree, a messaging that that, that Black Lives Matter can be easily confused with a global organization, the name itself. And so, one, this is a staff idea, so I'm not even going to say that Ms. Robertson, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Harrison agree with it, but the thought was ILM. Our staff did that. They've got make, you know, sort of projected legs on them. ILM equals BLM, and I did mention that to Ms. Robertson. She said, Tom, what I really hope to do was have enough characters or spaces for different artists to paint, so all could be inclusive. And so however, that group was receptive to the council providing some guidance on a message that you could support that will reflect our values as a community in terms of supporting all elements of the community. At this time, I will stop and see if there are any questions for me.
Were there any questions? The, the only thing that I'll say is, I, I know that we've had a lot of comments from both people that want to see the artwork go up and others that have some concerns about it. And I know that, Tom, and I just want to say to you and staff, and also to Kevin Spears, that going out here to take a look at this, thank y'all for a lot of work that has gone into thinking about this. And when, and Jana Robertson was here earlier, she, she answered some of my questions in respect to the art exhibit, the temporary time, the process, the size, that I guess you just shared with us. Who maintains it? There were some concerns about folks saying that who pays for it, and obviously, they're going to be, be paying for it. I guess one of the concerns that I do have that, you know, and, and it is, is the creation of the designated public forum space. Obviously, this is looked at as an artistic and cultural expression that will be there for temporary purposes and then be moved to another location somewhere in the community. But the creation of the designated public forum space, where you're actually taking your First Amendment right as a, as a citizen and expressing it in a, in a public setting. There's a concern from, from my perspective, because this is just changing the whole dynamic of what can be put up there. And I've talked with the city attorney and some of the things that he's shared with me, or is that you can put just about anything up there, and then where do you put it? Do you want to put it in front of these folks' properties and stuff like that? So I'd just like to have an additional two weeks for you and staff to, 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 and for us to kind of have more discussion about that, because it does set a precedent that we've never seen before. And this is, I mean, it's not that it's never seen before, but even the artistic portion of this i- is to create discussion, and I get that. But it is also for temporary purposes, and then it is moved to another location at some point in time. So I like to, I know that, you know, they've been, they, they petitioned on June the eleventh, and I know there was a lot of discussion and concerns about putting it into the street, but then moving into another location. And of course, I think the location that you picked or designated is an appropriate location, the Gervais Park, the Freedom Walk, next to the eighteen ninety-eight. Makes a lot of sense and, and, and the visibility. But I would like to give you folks an additional two weeks to work with Jen and her team to see about sizing, the messaging, and, and stuff of that nature. I know there's been some other comments about can, can we do ILM with hearts and whatnot, and that, and Black Lives Matter may be the thing, but I would like to have some additional time for staff from Sterling and Tom and, and, and you folks, just to get, give a little bit more input into this and how this thing would, would work. Because I would imagine too, that being that it would be a temporary art exhibit, and that's the way where it is being portrayed, is that there would be some sort of a process, because I would imagine at some point in time, others would want to come forward with a request and, you know, we, we don't want to deny it. But we also have an issue, I have a concern about the, the public, the creation of the public forums space that may be totally different from this. And we may not want to do that, but we may want to be able to say that this is the art that we're allowing to have. I would allow, I, I would just ask council if y'all would help me and just giving staff an additional two weeks to answer some additional questions, to get some, some more things tied down. And then we can make a decision in hopefully two weeks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The resolution before you includes correctly the need for an encroachment agreement. It would take me at least two weeks to work with any group for any encroachment agreement. That's a fairly standard agreement template, but we have to modify it every time we do one, whether it's an entrance to a subdivision or a normal sign with just a name on it. It would take that, and I would take this as marching order to work with Ms. Robertson in this group and to not lose any time overall by taking advantage of the two weeks that council would grant here.
Yeah, and, and Mayor and Council, city attorney, when we worked on this, we talked about this has been a pilot project since, we've not done this before. We really want to use this as an opportunity to study, determine what we can learn from it. And so it is temporary, as Mrs. Robertson said, and this will help us nail down the questions that we really can't answer, quite frankly, in such a short turnaround. And it would be a welcome period for us to sort of solidify everything, so you're real clear on what we're bringing forward to you. We'd appreciate the additional time.
Mr. O'Grady?
Ms. Mayor, I, I support your, your approach. I, I think this is the right location for the Robertson proposal. I think it's the right place for that sign. And, you know, that we can work with them a little bit about what it's exactly going to look at. I'm, I'm frankly, from the, the mock-up I saw tonight, I like where it looks. I think it's, I think it would be good just as it's presented, but we can give some time on that. I see the second part is very different, which is, will there be a place for public, public comment, and where will it be? And this project has been termed a pilot, and boy, we've learned a lot already. We learned the amount of kickback we can get from anything that gets posted. So I think we have to give several real careful thought on whether we're going to create a permanent expression location, and also where that will be. And I'm not convinced that this is the right place for it. But I am supportive of going ahead with the art project that's already been proposed. And I would hope we can proceed with that, and if we need two more weeks, the staff needs time. I think it's important that we do it carefully. And I am supportive of giving that additional time, but I would like to see it come back as two separate items. One is, does the art project get, get approved and its location, and what will it look like? And then the second one is, will we have an expression zone, and if so, where are we going to put that? Because I think just from what we've learned so far on this one, it's going to be an extremely difficult decision to make.
Agreed. Yes, sir, Mr. Spears.
Initially, my intent was for the resolution to be about the sign. The Freedom of Expression Plaza came as a selling point for the rest of council. I think Mr. Moten, Ms. Robertson, and Mr. Harrison, and Mr. Davis, we, we all felt that that would be the thing to kind of reel the rest of council in. I'll, I'll express my dissatisfaction with us not voting on the signage tonight. And, and I think, you know, there may need to be a little more time on the plaza. But I, I think, you know, what we did to get to this point was try to, we lost a little bit of ground with some people, but we tried to gain ground with other people. And we're still in a stalemate, and we don't have anything currently. And it's, we've already lost time. We lost a lot of time to, to get to this point, to ask for two more weeks. And then at the end of those two weeks, where are we going to end up? I'm concerned. I'm concerned by that. I think a lot of people are concerned. We, we've seen all the emails for and against it. This was a big concern of a lot of people in Wilmington. And, you know, I, I'm just, I'm upset that we didn't pull the trigger tonight. But if we're going to wait two more weeks to come up with a decision, I hope we as a council do the right thing.
I hope so too, and I think there's just a lot of questions that we just need to nail down, and I think I want to give staff that opportunity to do it, because it is a pilot program. It is a little bit out of the norm, but we also want to make certain that we have a process in place that when others want to do some artwork of that nature, that we also be able to address it. Hopefully, and then Tom, and I have a lot of confidence in you and staff, and, and I know you folks can come up something, and it gives you city attorney the opportunity to do the, the proposals that you're going to need for your encroachment agreements on that piece of property. I know a lot of people have gone into and done a lot of work, and Tom and Kevin and others have gone out there so well. But here again, Mrs. Robertson has answered a lot, answered a lot of my questions tonight. I just wanted to see if we can tie down the rest of this, but going back to Mr. O'Grady's concerns about the wall. And, and I was a big supporter of the wall to begin with, this, the, the designated public forum. The more I think about it, and based on some of the conversations I've had with our city attorney about things that could be put on there, I do have some concerns about moving forward with that. That's just my personal opinion, because if you can put anything on that wall, or say anything on that wall in a public setting where people are driving by, is one thing. When you see it on Facebook, or when you see it on social media, you can turn it off. You got to see it here, and that's, that's a big concern of mine. And we have young people, kids, that see some of this stuff, and they may understand, they may not. So that's just a concern that I have, and others might have some concerns, but I just want to about more of that, have more discussion about that. Because as Kevin said, I think these are two separate pieces that need to come to us. One is the installation of the artwork, temporary basis, and the other one is this public forum piece. And I would like to see the same thing, because I think that's only fair. Mr. Anderson?
I'm, and full agreement on the separating the two. But do you have those images? Because I hate when we put stuff out there in the public, and they're, they're trying to think, what are they talking about? What is it without, if we, do you have those?
The images of the expression.
Yeah, just so people can have a
Yes.
An idea. One else, got to key that up. Somebody else has a comment. It's going to take a while.
We go to a hundred percent, it'd probably show up pretty good. Right there. So that one's Cowan Street, the end of the roadway segment that's a dead end. It's just a small wall. It's just a small wall. On that one, what you see really is, what we've seen in a number of communities, is this chalk. So it's not permanent paint. Generally, there's some theme for the day that you may have at the top. I feel like sunshine makes me feel like this, and people just write comments on it. It provides opportunity for expression. The other is, could be work that is either commissioned by the city, or it could be work that council asks for individuals to provide applications. The second item, and again, these are, at this point, just high-level conceptual, and if you're really going to do them, we would engage the community, get a lot of community public input, surrounding neighbors, stakeholders would be involved. But just to give an idea what it could be utilized, this is North Front Street. And right now in that area, the street really is a low-volume street. It's bisected by, or it intersects with North Fourth Street, as well as Parsley. Area is going through a significant amount of revitalization, and it also borders the edge of the Brady Arts District. These Freedom Expression Plazas, if you will, what you see again is sort of what I would call chalk art, creating some, it's a four-lane roadway, much substantially larger than it needs to be, creating more green space for a contemplation garden. We see Gervais Memorial Park is sort of being a really nice tribute to the family, but there's an opportunity to enhance it, make it more of a place. It actually creates more green space for residents in the area. In the far back, you see what looks like a box culvert. And again, that could be artwork painted, it could be either through commission. But what we were thinking, at least in our minds from a staff perspective, is any artwork created by the public would be temporary, chalk artwork on the street. But any of the permanent work would be work that is commissioned by the city, what we would probably call government speech. So again, we're not envisioning someone going out there with spray cans and painting all these words that can't be removed unless it's painted over. We're envisioning something like that. And to give you an idea of how this space can have even more energy, if you've ever been to downtown Asheville, they have a drum circle, and it's a really cool place to have. And we don't have enough of these meeting places that are free for people from different backgrounds to come together. So we envision creating this place where a cross-section of the community could really come together and unite with some energy. And a drum circle could be a place like that, and it's really a vibrant place, maybe some tables with checkerboards up top, where community comes together and plays checkers or chess. So that's what was really envisioned in this plaza. So it would be closed to three-street traffic, and you would have to want to go there, walk through there to see it. And it would anchor the northern end or northeastern end of the Freedom Walk. It's just a broad vision.
Tom, is there any way to, in the next two weeks, that you could share with us what other communities have done with their, with this type of thing of expression? I know you just shared with us Asheville. Maybe we can get some pictures of that, as well as some other cities, and how they, I know that, I think Tony Carter today showed me something today in Pensacola, Florida, where they had taken a whole bridge in Pensacola, and they painted it, and they had used it for artwork. But that was, but could you show, maybe you could share with council some other places around the country?
And I have it on that drive right now. It was for the June 15th meeting. They're using bridge trusses, abutments, they're using, in fact, if you look at sound walls, in many communities they're using that. But we'll bring a list, and we'll identify the communities. But again, we wouldn't necessarily say just create a place for people to go out and write expression. We're not really creating a sense of place, a real park-like setting that enhances well-being of everyone if you go there.
Tom, do you have any?
What they have in Charlotte?
In terms of the mural that's on the ground, you mean?
Yeah, but that mural was able to happen so quickly because of, had this Freedom of Expression Plaza in place already. That's why they didn't have to vote on it.
Right.
And actually, they paid the artist to do that.
Yes, so they could commission it, and it wouldn't really create a free speech issue. I do have Charlotte's image in there. I'd rather go back and make sure I have all the information and fresh in my mind and present it at two weeks from now, if that's okay? I just want to make sure I'm not, I want to be correct on what I'm attributing the attributes to.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I just want to emphasize two things.
One, what you're seeing up here is just concept. This is just some very preliminary ideas. And the resolution that was before council as to the plaza, the expression plaza, that was just to direct staff to look into it. This is something that it takes a good amount of time to research it, find the right place, find the right way of doing it, what's right for our community. It is not something that we could snap our fingers and it'd be radio. So this is much more a marathon than it is a sprint.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. And also, the thought was, by creating this, next time there's a request for expression, we're not scrambling to try to solve them on a case-by-case basis. So wherever we want to do it, if we will want to do it, we think it's something that may be worthwhile, considered long-term. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll make the motion that we continue to sign until August 4th is our next meeting. Is that correct? Okay.
Can I make a, can I make a motion that we, that we vote on the resolution, considering the authorization of, authorization of the public art installation, and then take the two weeks for the public plaza?
That's a substitute motion?
Yes.
Okay. Substitute motion. Mr. Spears, you want to go ahead and vote on the resolution?
I want to vote on, on the first half of the resolution, considering the authorization for the public art installation in support for Black Lives Matter. We can have a motion on this, we can have a continuation on the second part.
You can go ahead and make the motion.
All right, I'll support it.
So you have a motion made by Mr. Spears, second by Mr. Barnett. To repeat that again, Mr. Spears?
The resolution, considering authorization for public art installation in support for Black Lives Matter, and continuing the creation of a designated public forum for artistic and cultural expression for, for two weeks, or whenever the next council meeting is.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, you can.
I thought, maybe I'm just confused, but I thought what the mayor was talking about, and what the staff had said was, and what the city attorney said was, it was really going to take two weeks to sort of bring it back in a solid form here, that you're still working with this Ms. Robinson, and?
Well, I think based on the conversation that Mr. Moten and I had with Ms. Robertson, even if we voted yes tonight, and it was passed, it would still take three weeks for them to do it, right, Tom?
At least get started. You know, I think the agenda item also indicates what parameters set forth by council to negotiate. And some conversations, a lot of conversations, the group has indicated a significant willingness to be receptive to council, and to go forward with the ILM heart BLM. And if you feel comfortable allowing the city attorney and manager's office to work out all those details, scale, the wording, and I would recommend, if you're comfortable with ILM heart BLM, that would be what I would go back to the group and say, council as part of this resolution is willing, is approved. But I think the content, the message you need to tell us today, what it is you want to improve, because we don't, we don't know yet what that message is.
Well, I think after, you know, seeing the scale of the first thing, that, I mean, I-
I think the scale of the first thing is beautiful.
So, yeah, I mean, I like it better, although when you talk about it eight feet tall and 120 feet long or something, it sounds gargantuan, you know? But when you show us the scale of it, which is the first time I've seen that, you know, I mean, I think there's still a lot to be answered here.
Six to eight months, eight months maximum time, temporary, Black Lives Matter. Again, but the group is willing to consider, what they really hope to do was have enough canvases to have different artists involved. And so let's say that it were ILM, BLM, they may want to put four hearts in the middle so they have enough images, but it wouldn't be Black Lives Matter. The pleasure of council will go for it.
Wait a minute, Mr. Grady, Mr. Grady's got his hands up.
I'm glad we're hearing more support for this. Kevin, I really think we ought to give the staff two weeks to answer all those questions that Tom just brought up. We're going in the right direction. I hear from Margaret, she's more at ease with the full statement. I am. I liked, having seen that mock-up, I feel very comfortable with it in that location. But we've got to get some other details worked out, so let's give the two weeks. Let's not put it up to a vote tonight. I can't count the heads, Kevin, is what I'm saying to you.
How many?
I think one thing that's really important, too, is we need to, before we do this, we need to understand how we're going to deal with the next group that comes with an art installation.
Did we not, did we not hear them say, this is a project, right? If it's a project, then it means that we're, we're, we're in the jurisdiction of the project. So they mentioned, we'll have it up there for a year, we can tell them how long we want it up there. And then I think I heard someone say that we really need to take the making a display area for everybody to do art as a second item, something totally different. I think what I'm hearing Kevin say is that, let's do this now, let's at least assure them that we want to do this now. You know, because I think that for our community, both ways, either way, I think we need to almost like make a decision that we're going to do this. And I think, you know, delay doesn't mean denied, it just means that, I think that it's really important that we say to our community that this is important to us. And that's what I'm hearing us say. But I really want them to kind of, and I guess the vote would really affirm that, you know? Even if we're not sure about all of the little details, I think the vote would really affirm that.
Well, two Kevins. What, what is it, are you proposing a length of time? I'm just trying to, I mean, those, these are things that ought to be part of this.
Length of time for, well, one year, they, they want it three years, but they're willing to take one, right? That's what I heard them say tonight.
So yours would, your motion, one?
One year.
And then they also make them move it, and they would move it, and they would move it, yeah. And then they would move it at the end of that year. It also was stated that it would be fully funded, not by the city, but it's fully funded by private person. They are going to be responsible for taking care of it. So I guess the major issue, and the elephant in the room, is really, what do we want the sign to say? And that's going to say to us, not only, I'm not saying us as African-Americans, I'm saying to the city, it's going to say to us as a city, what do we think about lives? And I want, I want us to also remember as a city, that you can't look at a few people and, and claim the movement based on that. I think one of the things that I'm scared of is that we've perhaps have really forgotten why we were marching. You know, I think we've probably kind of missed that, and missed that we really want to make our city better for children and our grandchildren who will come along. And maybe this sign, maybe this sign might be a North Star. Maybe it could be something that we could point at, and it could be a teaching tool to the people that drive by. It could be a teaching tool to everybody that, hey, everybody's lives matter, sure. We all know that. Everybody's lives matter. But in my neighborhood, and in my, my community, I can still concerned about what happens when my children go outside every day. So I'm thinking, what I'm hearing Kevin say is that we would like to vote on this now to assure that this is going to happen, and then we'll look at the second half when we get all that other information. But I like what the signs look like, and the size didn't scare me at all.
I just think there's so many unknowns. I, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with anything you say. I just think there's so many unknowns. What do you do when some group that you don't agree with comes, and they say they want to have a project, they want to have an art installation, and you let this group do this? Aren't you setting a precedent? I, I just think that's one thing. I think we don't know, really, we're not set on what it's going to look like. So I don't know that I can support something that's so nebulous, it's so ill-defined. You know, if we do something else, like we did, just, it's, it's not analogous, but this eating-out thing downtown, whatever it's called, Downtown Alive, that took forever. You know, we had all these people sign off on it, and we, you know, I mean, we, we had so much community input. We've gotten a lot of input on this without a lot of details, but I, we've gotten both sides of this pretty, pretty dramatically. You know, this, this is not a one-sided thing. And I think, just people are concerned, I think people that probably support it philosophically are still concerned. So I, I don't know. I would like to do what the mayor suggested, and what Kevin O'Grady is suggesting, and give the staff two weeks. Let's answer all these questions. Let's, you know, have we not talked to other cities and seen what they've done, and how they've legally pulled this off? And to, by not setting a precedent? These things are important, and, you know, we represent everybody.
Oh, absolutely. I agree.
We are not a sheer democracy. We live in a republic, and so we, we practice representative government. And so we all, all seven of us individually, represent 120,000 people in this city. And I, I would just like to make sure that when we do it, we do it right. So I, I don't know that I could support something that's not defined.
I guess one of the things I'm, I'm not nervous about, but I want to make sure that, and I guess it's hard to make sure, because you send us so many unanswered questions, but when we come back next week, or in two weeks, we don't want to have the delayed again. That's all. I'm just, I'm, you know, I don't, I don't want to, because what, what, you know, we're losing time, as Kevin mentioned, because of what's happening across the country. And we're not being copycats. We're just saying what's happening across the country, and I believe that this is probably the, the best time that we, we have had in a number of years, where the whole country is saying, look at how a certain set of people have been treated, and we've got to do better. And so what I really want, along with this sign, is that more things to come that will show that we're doing more than just putting up a sign. Because I can put up a sign and ride by the sign, but if my heart hasn't changed, the sign doesn't mean anything at all. The sign may be, just like I said, that, that North Star that says, okay, let's think about what we need to do to make sure people are getting what they need. Last thing I'll share with you is, a little brown girl didn't want to keep her baby, and she placed the baby in a trash can. We're living in some serious times, some tough times, and we need to make sure that, that we are saying to anybody's child, you've got a right to be here, and you don't have to start in a trash can. We want to support you and make your life best or better. So, but that's all. As I just, I just want to make sure that we kind of know we're going to do that.
Mr. Grady?
Kevin, it's your motion, and Clifford, your seconded it. You can call it for a vote tonight. I, I can't count the votes here. And once you have a vote, that's it. I think you're better off agreeing, I think you're, I think you're better off letting the staff work out all the details, come to us with the full proposal in two weeks, and vote on it then.
I think, yeah.
Why don't we say no later, man? That action will be taken no later than August 4th. I'm, I'm with Clifford. This cannot be, continue to be delayed or whatever, that we say, action will be taken, definitive action will be taken no later than August, whatever the date was, the 4th.
I think we have, I think, has been provided to us on the piece that we're going to vote on tonight. Now, the public expression part for, for the plaza, that may be a little more murky, but I think tonight, the details that we need to make this thing go forward are here. So we either we vote for it, or we vote against it, and we, we deal with the constituents tomorrow or later tonight.
But we don't know what the art is, we don't know how, how they, how we deal with the next- the next group that comes, we don't have any of those answers.
Yeah. I, I'm not concerned.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to go back to my substitute motion that we continue it for two weeks, definitive answer by August the 4th. I know there's a concern that we're not going to move forward with it, that somebody's scared that we're going to not do things, and I pretty much, I think we've proven as a council that we have done things, and that I'm wanting to give staff two more weeks to iron out those details, because I do know that we will have other groups that will come forward and ask for different things. And I just want to make sure that we have a process in place. I want to understand where the, where this, this temporary art will be moved to at some point in time. And I also want to know the size of the scale, which I appreciate you sharing that with me today, and I don't have a problem with it, but I do think that we need two weeks to iron out those details, because this is a pretty significant issue for, for, for all of us, for the community, and I understand where everybody's coming from, but I think to give you folks two more weeks to do what you need to do is not out of the ordinary. So I would ask for those two weeks. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, can I, can I just misspeak to Kevin for a second? Kevin?
Which one? The other Kevin, right?
Kevin Spears. One of the things that I've learned, you had a good-looking one, one of the things I've learned in life is I've learned that oftentimes delay doesn't mean denied. And, you know, we, we've, we've talked about the idea of, we want to, we want to make our point. I think that we've, we've done that, we've, we've kind of stated to you that how really important this is, okay? We really think that's important. And I, I, I like Kevin's wisdom, the other Kevin, the ugly one, I like Kevin's wisdom that we need to just wait two weeks, we can wait two weeks, I think it's not going to hurt anything, and I think that we would then continue to work on doing some other things that we really need to do to make a substantial change in some of the lives of the children that we represent.
If the mayor's subsequent motion is seconded, then we, you know, we have to go for?
Okay. I'll do this, I will, I will withdraw my second, and that way, that will.
Definitive answers for all of us to move forward.
Yeah, definitive answer, I'll, I'll take that motion. I'll second your motion, Mayor.
Okay. All right, I have a motion on the floor to continue to August.
You are second happy.
Do we have to take individual votes on this, or can we just say aye?
Do individuals.
Okay. Mr. Barnett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. O'Grady, how do you vote? Mr. Ravanmark, how do you vote?
I just want to make sure that what you said, or what, I think Margaret or Clifford or somebody said, action be taken no later than August 4th.
Yes. No later?
That, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
All right, I, I vote for it.
Yes. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Spears?
Oh, man. I won't say aye.
Okay.
I really want to say no, but I don't say aye.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our last item of business, which are, is our evaluation report and report for the evaluation committee, and at this time I'd like to recognize Councilmember Kevin O'Grady who's the chair, chairman of that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am honored to serve on that committee along with Mayor Protem Haines and Councilman Barnett. We worked very hard on getting everybody thing done on time this year, and we almost made it. Our job, the council's job is to review only three employees of the city, that's the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk. And we had the pleasure of doing that for the public, our processes that each of the employees does a self-review, and after that is done, that is made available to each of the council members who does a review of the employee. We then gather those seven reviews together and then we meet to discuss and, and come up with a consensus of the review for the individual and for salary adjustments. And then each employee, we meet with each employee and deliver the results. And tonight, our formal function tonight is actually vote on the salary adjustments. So I'll start with our city manager, Sterling Cheatham. And the consensus of the council was to authorize a salary increase of 4%. And if I were to make the motion on behalf of the committee, that Sterling, Sterling's salary be increased by 4% and.
We have a motion by, do we have to take these individually or can we do it collectively?
I think we've always done it individually.
Individually, so we're going to go with the, the city manager first. Motion made was made by Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Okay, and seconded by Mrs. Okay, Mayor Protem, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Ravanmark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Grady, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Spears, how do you vote?
Aye.
And then the chair votes aye. Okay, Mr. Grady, proceed.
Second is for our city attorney, John Joy. The review here was excellent, the outcome however, was not just the salary increase. In addition to looking at the, their performance, we also look at the marketplace, and in the case of city attorneys, we determined that Mr. Joy's salary was out of, out of whack with the market, so we're making a significant market adjustment to his salary. And the recommendation and the item for approval of the council is to increase Mr. Joy's salary to $185,000. And I make that motion.
Second.
Makes the motion, seconded by Ms. Haines. Okay, how do you vote, Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Mr. Ravanmark?
Aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Spears, again, the chair's aye, okay?
And finally, our city clerk, the adjustment or recommended for our clerk is a 4% increase, and on behalf of the committee, I make that motion to increase her salary by 4%.
Second. Make that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Grady, seconded by Mr. Spears. How do you vote, Mr., Ms., I mean, Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Ravanmark?
Aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
And then the chair's aye.
That completes the report of the committee.
Okay, very good. And this concludes the regular agenda by city council. Then he ought to be brought forward by our city clerk.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations and thank you very much for all your hard work, Penny. City Attorney?
Thank you, and it is an honor to be in Wilmington and to serve.
It's an honor to have you here and thank you for continuing to serve with us. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Cheatham?
No items other than also express my thanks and gratitude, you guys putting up with me.
And I, and I just wanted to say thank you Sterling for everything you've done for this community and your public service to this, to this great community, you've, you've been outstanding, thank you, sir. With that, Mayor Protem?
Well, I don't want this evening to go by without recognizing the death of Congressman John Lewis. I think that's a tremendous, significant loss for the country in general, but it's certainly, especially in a loss for establishing these positive and progressive race relations. Congressman Lewis, as we all know, I hope we all know, set an example for, really for all of us to follow, to be involved, to participate, and to also to be respectful of one another, even when you disagree, and he will be, he will be sorely and sadly missed.
Thank you. Mr. Barnett?
Yes, sir. Couple of things. One, I know that all of us know that there were four million plus cases of COVID in the United States, where there are 141,000 deaths. I want to remind people to please wear a mask, practice social distancing, and wash your hands. I had the opportunity to talk with Dr. Philip Brown, and he shared with me the other day that he's afraid, he's scared, because he says the numbers are going up and more people are going to die. So we really want to encourage people to do those things. He says one of the challenges we're having is some people are wearing their masks, but they're still not practicing social distancing, they're still getting up close to each other. And I tell people to tell you to back up, back up, so continue to remember that. Second thing I want to remind people to do, please, is that you can get your state absentee ballot request form for the 2020 elections in November, because we don't know what COVID-19 is going to be like, and if you don't want to stand in lines, you can get your 2020 state absentee ballot request form. And those are the two items I want to share.
Thank you, sir. Hey, Clifford?
Yes, sir.
Not one thing.
What, that census?
The census.
Yes, sir, census, please do it. You got to do it, you got to do that, man. We lose money, the county loses money, the city loses money, and that's 10 years of losing money, okay? And that's how we get behind, so please.
And a lot of people realize if we don't do the census, we, you know, our MSA is in Myrtle Beach, in Brunswick County, so make sure you do your census. Mr. Grady?
Nothing new, nothing additional, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ravanmark?
Just, just, please for God's sakes quit throwing trash out of your car. Where do you get home and put it in the trash can? Take a little pride in your city.
Mr. Anderson?
You're here, nothing more, thank you.
Mr. Spears?
I had a couple of things. Rest in peace to John Lewis and C.T. Vivian, great trail, great trailblazers in the arena of race relations, race, racial equality. Oh, man, I, I, I want to say to Wilmington that we're going to be okay, regardless of where we are, how things look, how things look today, how things looked yesterday, we're going to be okay. Also want to give a big shout out and welcome to the world, my grandson, Roland J.
Man, congratulations, you're too young to look like a grandfather, man.
It's okay.
Congratulations Spears. I, I also just, just to close tonight, I just want also, I had an opportunity, and I think Penny, you were there, when Congressman Lewis came to Wilmington, Congressman McIntyre brought Congressman Lewis and, and to speak at City Hall, and I had an opportunity to sit at the dais with him right beside him, and a song was played, and he leaned over to him and he told me that was Dr. King's favorite song, and it was "If I Can Help Somebody." And it was just a beautiful moment, and him sharing that, that memory of him and Dr. King, and a lot of people don't realize this, he's, he was the youngest person to speak at the March on Washington, and he was the last survivor of that group that spoke there that day. So rest in peace Congressman Lewis, you were a great warrior for this country and you definitely changed this country. So with that, thank you for taking an interest in your government, we stand adjourned.